If the city clerk, please call the board and then we will call the meeting.
Alderman Walker.
Uh-huh.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Here.
Alderman Little.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Black Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Alderman Walker.
Here.
All right, thank you. I will call this meeting to order. This is going to be the regular meeting. This is our first meeting in September. And we will have a stand for Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invitation by Alderman Sistrunk and then a moment of silence. So if you would, please stand with me.
I pledge allegiance to the quiet of the United States of America.
To the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Sistrunk, if you would, please, ma'am.
Let us pray. Eternal God, bountiful wisdom, we ask you to bless this mayor and board of aldermen. Grant that through our discussions and decisions, we may solve our problems effectively. Enhance the well-being of our community. And achieve together a fairer and more united society. Amen.
All right, thank you for staying here this evening. We appreciate your attendance. Um, the first order of business will be approval of the official agenda with consented items unless there are some changes. And because we have people who are in attendance by video conference or by telephone, I will also speak the responses on the individual alderman's individual. So separately, Alderman Clark, do you have any change? Consent items on the agenda? Alderman Sistrunk.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty.
No, ma'am, thank you.
Black Mayor Perkins.
No, ma'am.
And Alderman Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am. Now, upon our human resource G one, the agenda. Also, we got cover sheet Scott Osborne and then they can suggest a motion that Todd Chrysler.
Oops, okay.
So which one we hire?
It would be Scott Osborne. Um, is Mr. Ashford in the room? He's not. We'll see if we can get him to come. But we'll remove that one from the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Consider that one removed from the consent agenda. Any other items?
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. With that, I need a motion for approval with the consented items as amended.
So moved, mayor.
I have a motion from Alderman Little. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Beatty. Other discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying, uh, I'm sorry, by saying yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Yes.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yes.
Alderman Little.
Yes.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Black Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yes.
All right, it is unanimous. And I will read the consented items for the record. Consideration of the minutes of the August fourth, twenty twenty meeting of the mayor and the board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty work session of the mayor and board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the August eighteenth, twenty twenty meeting of the mayor and the board of aldermen of the city of Starkville. Next page, under mayor's business, consideration of extending the proclamation of a local emergency due to the COVID nineteen virus for an additional thirty days. Under community development department code enforcement, consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi code annotated twenty-one nineteen eleven. To determine whether the building and property located at one twenty-four Yellow Jacket Drive with the parcel number one zero two H dash zero zero dash zero three eight point zero zero. Are ministered to, are ministered to the public health, safety and welfare of the community. Next page, under finance and administration, number two, request authorization to name Cadence Bank as a municipal depository for the city of Starkville. Number three, request approval for source of supply bids for the street and sanitation for the period of October one, twenty twenty, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Under human resources, number two, request authorization to hire Haley Nathan, Diego Soron Manises. And Odie Rush as entry level police officers. Number three, request authorization to hire Caleb Davis as a radio operator dispatcher in the Starkville Police Department. Four, request authorization to hire Mary Brooks as a driver in the sanitation environmental services department. Number five, request authorization to transfer Marquise Jordan from the sanitation department to Parks and Rec Department as a maintenance worker. Number six, request authorization to hire Gerald Lyle McCaskey as a community development administrator in the community development department. Number seven, request authorization to hire Billy Shed as entry level firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Under the police department, number one is consideration to accept the fiscal year twenty-one Mississippi Office of Highway Safety. One hundred percent reimbursable DUI grant for funding of two DUI officers in approximately five hundred and forty hours in overtime up to eighty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Number two is consideration to accept the fiscal year twenty-one Mississippi Office of Highway Safety, one hundred percent reimbursable police traffic safety grant for funding of overtime up to sixteen thousand dollars. Request approval to declare a two thousand and six Dodge Charger VIN number two V three L A five three H two six H four seven eight five eight one. At surplus and list on govdeal.com. Number four is request approval to renew the one-year cradle point renewal of net cloud essentials for mobile routers prime. Applied to one VR seventeen hundred service and support, and support provided by cradle point at a cost of seven thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars through eight twenty-nine twenty twenty-one. Number five is request authorization to approve the testing procedures motion in the Starkville Police Department. Number six is request approval to purchase NEMA Box Surveillance System with Canon VB M forty-four camera and four G modem. Including enclosure bracket, intelligent reset device, hardwired power supply from covert track group, Inc. At a cost of twenty-one thousand one hundred and ninety-five dollars, the lower of two quotes, to be reimbursed one hundred percent by the grant. Under the utilities department, number one, request authorization for utility maintenance. To provide professional services associated with substation testing and maintenance for the Southwest Starkville one sixty-one sixty-one thirteen KV substation. Two is request authorization for Starkville Utilities to enter into a power supply flexibility agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority, TVA. Three is request authorization for city of Starkville to enter into a general delivery point agreement with the Tennessee Valley Authority, TVA, to supply one sixty-one KV to the new Southwest substation. Number four is request authorization to declare the old and removed water division water meters and meterhead surplus. Property advertised for sale and sale on govdeal.com. And number five is request authorization for vacuum truck sales and service to conduct necessary repairs to the water division CCTV truck. And camera in the amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars. And that concludes the consent agenda item.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, it's my pleasure. All right, uh, with that, the next item on the agenda are announcements and comments. And I have a couple of things that I would like to, like to make announcements about. Um, in particular, the, um, I want to thank the fire department for their service to, um, state of Louisiana. They went down to render aid. I think they're on their way back now, if I can believe my Twitter feed. So we want to thank them for extending that service to our neighboring states and for the service that they do, certainly for our community as well, but in particular in this time of a, of a emergency associated with Hurricane Laura. I also want to, um, talk about the census again. We still are reaching near the end of the census. Opportunity for people to, um, respond. If you haven't done so, please do so. It is incredibly important for us. As we, um, try to get our, um, our numbers up to where they were supposed to be. We want to, we don't want to lose a legislator. We don't want to lose federal funding for things like the bus system, for things like our housing, for things, or any number of things that we, um, are. Reimbursed for or provided funds, federal funds for based on population. So if you would, please share it on social media, or share it with your friends, or encourage others who you know have not, um. Answered the census to do so. It's really quite simple and, and goes a long way to helping us, so. Uh, the other thing, supervisor Miller has asked me to note that the Mississippi Horse Park is having their first event. The eleventh through the thirteenth, it's the horse tour barrel race. And she says they are already sold out. That they have people coming from Louisiana and Texas and Alabama to this barrel race. It's going to be their first event post-COVID, or well, it's not post-COVID, but. Since the COVID started. And so they are very excited about it. And it brings people into our community. Um, and encourage, encourage them to be a part of our community in obviously a safe and responsible way. But I know since it's affiliated with an issue that people will be adhering to the requirement. So anyway, it's always nice to, nice to have events that are going to be successful and highlight our community. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, uh, we have some new lights on Lafayette Street that just got hung today. So if. When you're leaving the, the city hall, if you go down Main Street and look to your right on Lafayette, uh, it's really pretty exciting. Thanks to. Uh, Carl Small Town Center, thanks to the partnership, excuse me, the partnership, thanks to the electric department who, uh, gave in kind services in, in, uh, doing that this morning and, and today. Um, and I think Terry is going to find out for us when the lights are going to come up. So something exciting for us to look forward to. And there is also a. The Learfield Dog Talk is going to occur, uh, the first one of the season is going to occur on Thursday night and it's going to happen in the partnership. And so that street will be used. For proper social distancing and spacing. And hopefully it will make a very nice venue for that, for that particular, um, event. So I'm really excited about that. So that concludes my remarks. Anybody else have any? Alderman Carter, anything?
Well, the only one I have is there was confusion earlier this week of masks wearing off at. On the mask mandate statewide coming off at eight AM on Monday morning. I know we all received many, uh, numerous phone calls and texts. The truth is matter of the decade order fifteen twenty, the governor extended until September the fourteenth at eight AM. My recommendation has been from the very start of this. If the city should follow the governor's mandate. So if he extended and as long as he extended, the city should follow that mandate. He has dated reasons with the top health officials in the state and they're up to current. Uh, also has been a lot of positive data coming out this week about the downward trend. At some point, there may be a second or third wave in the future, but right now it's trending downward. Only six percent of the nation's cases apart from ten percent are death, death directly from COVID. The rest are, uh, more than eighteen, uh. Coexisting, um, conditions such as hypertension, excessive age, extreme obesity and things such as that. So just, and. My recommendation has been from the start, we need to follow the governor's mandate. So if he's requiring mask, we need to wear mask. At the same time, when he requires. Or takes the mandate off on the decade fifteen, decade order fifteen twenty, the city should also follow suit. So if that's September the fourteenth or October the first. Uh, that's from a uniformity standpoint. From a mercy management standpoint, it's always best to follow the, uh, the governor's orders. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
Oh, I was hoping we weren't going to have a lot of, um, mask discussions tonight, but since we've stepped off in that. Um, I do think it is something that we need to continue to evaluate. And we need to be seeing a downward trend in our county, not just statewide or nationwide, but in our county. And, uh, for, for an extended period of time, whether that's fourteen days or something longer. We, we have not seen that. We've seen the peak. We've seen the numbers come down. And right now we're seeing the numbers go back up. So. Um, while I appreciate and understand completely Alderman Carter's position. My position will be that, um, we need to make this unique to us and to our local partners, the universities and the counties. Um, in conjunction to keep our community safe.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, briefly, uh, Dr. Thomas Dobbs, our state health officer and the governor making good decisions and, and in the best interest of our state. And, uh, and we are seeing numbers decline as Alderman Carter was talking about. I looked at charts this morning and real times, I think we were in ten states or so, ten plus states that. Now show a decrease. And so that's, that's good. I mean, we're doing the right thing. Um, I will focus the governor. And state health officer would continue this, our mask, uh, requirement for a while. In particular in college standards, if, if we go back to not wearing masks, I think with a large student population. And maybe a vulnerable older population of, uh, combinations of those things and interaction stuff could be, could be tough on us. So. I hope to go and, and state health officer see this, to continue this until we have, are stay long enough on a downward trend that they feel like it's safe, very safe for us to come off of, from that mask mandate. But right now I, I, I support it and I, I hope they keep it going.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty. Black Mayor Perkins?
No comments, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No comments, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, the next thing on the agenda is citizen comments. This is the opportunity for citizens to come. You have three minutes, any subject matter that you would like to, uh, share with the board. We do not typically, uh, go back and forth. It's not normally a give and take, but, uh, we welcome the comments coming from the citizens. And it will be kind by Ms. Harden.
Uh, I'm grateful to the man, I'm grateful to the man that we come to walk together. So I thank you, sir. Mayor, as you pointed to, high key on the N A T C, um. Uh, in the days of the, of, uh, we have a lot of outside entertainers that make things worse than what they are. But, uh, we're proud of the real and the earth standing strong and not letting nothing, uh, shake us. Uh, appreciate the, uh, politics that you stand strong and keep us together. Because, uh, uh, evil only for a while, but, uh, joy come in the morning. Uh, a lot of people, we'll be glad when we can get back to the church. To try to get our spirit back on track. A lot of people, they have spirit problems that they are. Not being able to see one another, do the chapter each other, uh, either get the faith. Also, uh, getting the kids that are, uh, some need to be down with the inspiration of, of Ohio, Detroit. And Detroit, a lot of people, they just run, run through it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Tur.
Well, I got one question.
Let's go.
One comment, uh, and then get this for the city attorney. Uh, as far as the church meeting, there's nothing in any executive order, uh, here at the same church or meeting, hopefully, right?
That's right.
Okay. So, Mr. Turner, y'all can meet any, anytime you want to. I know. My church and most churches in town are meeting and it's, uh, basically what we do is, uh, sit every other aisle, every queue and socially distant. There's no. Uh, tied bucket pass. You drop them, come and go and, um, and, and. And so I guess any church can meet at any time and, um, corporately and in that environment and do it in a safe manner. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else wishing to speak to the board?
Yeah, let me speak to one here.
Sistrunk?
Excuse you, you got to follow CDC guidelines. You still got to have a social distance. You still got to have your mask and you got to compact it or how many that you can put in the sanctuary where you still got to follow the CDC guidelines.
Also in, uh, decade order fourteen ninety-two, section A subsection, um. This is going to be section nine, as you can do it in a state of Mississippi person who's actively providing your claim to access to religious worship. So it is allowed in a state of Mississippi. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak to the board? Anyone else?
My name is Stanley Miller. It's, and, uh, mayor and alderman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you and I. Uh, the topic I'm going to speak about is the mills. Um, as a former superintendent in two states, as a former principal, as a former athletic director. All the time we're looking at budgets and I know the problems that you have trying to balance a budget and so on. But I think, as I said two weeks ago, I think we, it's premature on some of the things that you're looking at here. The pandemic, as we said, positive, going down. That's great. But we've got to look at some other things here. One, our students left us in March. We're talking about sales tax. Our restaurants closed down. Many of our citizens are out of work. They're receiving government checks now to keep, to pay the bills, the rent bills and stuff. But yet, as a board, as a city, we're looking to increase two mills. It's not the time to do that. There's no doubt. Excerpts from Bob Smith talking about how much taxes have gone up year after year here. I love Starkville. Mayor White said when we retire, we're coming back to Starkville. He loves it. He loves the bull. But. We've got to get realistic on the time. Timing is not right. For our citizens to be hit with two mills at this time. You can go over to Mr. Cheney. He talks about Starkville. You're in second place. Beside, behind, behind Oxford, highest taxes. You're in second place. You hate to be in second place with Oxford anytime. But this one time is pretty good. He talks about increases and so on and different things. But we're turning around here and we're saying, sales tax, we have a problem. So what we're going to do to the citizens of Starkville? We're going to increase your mills. You have to help us balance our budget. I don't believe that's the way to go. And I strongly ask that the board reconsider that at this time. Down the road, that may be what we have to do, but it's not the thing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, I will close for citizens' comments. We have one public appearance, former Alderman Dumas. We are, is gracing us with his presence. He's going to give us a, um, update on the smart transit operations. Um, and I think you have a PowerPoint, do you not, sir?
I do.
Oh, wonderful. I will turn it over to you then.
Is it okay if I sit here and run them?
Certainly may. You may want to give him the mic, Ms. Harden, so that he will, everyone can hear him.
I'm going to turn it off. Is it ready?
Here we go.
All right, good deal. Thank you all for having me. Always a pleasure. Last time I was here was in February, so, uh, obviously a lot has changed since then. Um, we've learned a lot in that time. And I do want to go over just, uh, some brief updates with you of where we are. The mayor's asked that I come as part of our, uh, request for outside contributions this year. We've enforced this to receive outside contributions for the last two years. And we're seeking those outside contributions again. So I do want to give an update and, um. Give a comparison because I've, I've been asked more frequently about how we compare to others. And so I want to share that. Especially with our relationship and our system kind of matures to the point that it is. So first off, uh, to talk about a few stop and route changes, not route changes, but stop changes that we have experienced since February. The Safe Routes to School project was completed on Louisville Street South. We've installed two shelters there. Uh, it is receiving ridership and it has been a big addition with all the residential areas on Louisville Street, south of the cabinet. So that has been a good addition. The Partnership School is a new stop for us. And while the, uh, the ridership has not been high there, what's great to see is the number of school kids that walk on a daily basis. Southboard campus and the number of activities that are there, both with, uh, all those college kids and those school age kids intermingle throughout the day, uh, both. Internal to the building and external. And then lastly is one that's kind of a late breaking in the last couple of weeks, really the last, uh, six, eight weeks. Is one that's come to the, uh, the forefront of an opportunity to put a shelter in a needed span of Garrett Road. And it'd be a multi-person, uh, multi-purpose type of project with the sidewalk to link to a pedestrian area. Um, you'll remember our great friend Dorothy Isaac would sit in this room multiple times and talk about the need for a stop there. And it's, uh. Thankfully, we're finally getting to a point where we have the opportunity to do so. And so specifically, we're looking at a, uh, a portion of Garrett that's at the end of Oklahoma, south side of Roland Hills. And a, um, sidewalk development back of Hawassee. But, um, Alderman Perkins and the mayor and, uh, Edward Kemp have been working diligently on that. And so. Those are, uh, those are moving forward as we speak. So, uh, a few changes to mention, uh, that we're, we're happy to see. So ridership, we're oftentimes asked about ridership. You know, we spent the first couple of years coming and just talking about the magnitude of riders. Well, you know, we've now had over four million riders. Uh, we have over five hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand riders a year, just in nine months on campus. We have two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand riders a year, twelve months through, uh, you know, our city routes, uh, pre-COVID times. And I'll talk about post-COVID here in a minute. But, um, you know, we, these are convenience riders. And as we mature and as we gain success and as we win awards and all these things, we understand that we can't just come in and talk about, well, there's four million riders or four and a half million riders. That, you can just kind of get, kind of lost in the numbers there. And so we talked about the difference of convenience and necessity. So those that ride out of convenience, and we want to be a convenient transit system. Uh, when you go to urban areas and you ride the metro or you ride the bar or you ride all the different metro systems that are out there, you do so out of convenience. You know when it's going to be there, where it's taking you, and it is a convenience factor for you. Oftentimes, you're someone who has other transportation needs. So we're proud to be a convenient system that offers an opportunity for a lot of people. It might be too hot. It might be too cold. It might be too rainy. It might be too far. So let's ride out of convenience. But the thing that we really focus on and study and try to understand and grow is those are, are those that ride out of necessity. Those are the ones that don't have an opportunity. And when you look at the rural proposal or the rural side of our, um, our grant and the fact that we're funded through rural transit dollars. Low and moderate income individuals, pair transit is a big part of that. So pair transit numbers, these are the last three years. Started with one van. We carried thirty-three hundred people a year. Now you see what we're doing with a couple of vans and just a couple of drivers of carrying over six thousand people a year. A lot of these wheelchair lifts, a lot of these are people who have absolutely no other opportunity from a transportation perspective other than using smart. Whether they're getting to and from the Alice's, the hospital. In the past six months, we've carried a number of people who have driven our rhythm and service on their known route. And we've done it with our fixed route. And I'll talk about that too, that have used it as their only opportunity to get to the hospital, be tested. So a lot of people out of that that are truly necessity. So to talk about our funding, fifty-three eleven rural mass transit dollars, these are federal transit dollars that come from the FPA through MDOT. We fall off of the rural side since we're under fifty thousand people. There's two sides of our budget. There's an administrative side, which is an eighty-twenty match. So federal funds are eighty percent, local match is required at twenty percent. Operational side is fifty-fifty, so fifty percent federal funds, fifty percent local funds. Uh, the city has been gracious to us over the years. We wrote our first proposal in two thousand and twelve and thirteen. We received our first funding from the FPA. And the city has provided in-kind services since two thousand and thirteen to our current year. They've built shelter beds. They've installed signage. Um, sometimes there's been electrical, uh, some electric services provided. But in two thousand and nineteen, we saw and we were successful in receiving our first in-kind donation, so fifty thousand dollars in cash as part of your outside contribution. That goes into that pool of local cash that is required as part of our grant. We're again requiring, are, are requesting that this year. So what does that mean when you look at our overall budget? So this goes back to 2013. The blue is the federal share that we receive every year. The maroon is the local share that is provided by Mississippi State Park and Transit. And then as you look over to the right, when you look at 2019, 2020, and what's proposed for 2021, you can see the introduction of what the city of Starkville has provided in their $50,000 cost share. In 2019, that equated to about 3%, 3.2% of our total local share. When you look at 2020, that was right at 3%, 2.9%. Don't get alarmed by the size of our budget this next year. You remember when I was here in February, I talked about the fact that we have been working over multiple years to acquire capital funds to build a new transit facility. So we saw those funds, and I'm thankful to say that the Federal Transit Authority and MDOT have awarded us those funds. And so that's why the significant growth in our budget in 2021. Now, this goes back to the point that I've been asked, the comparison side, about how do we compare? Well, I talked, I talked in the past with you, you know, in the state of Mississippi, there are just a few fixed route systems. So those routes that have set schedule, set stops, et cetera. J-Trans, Coast Transit, Hub City Transit in Hattiesburg, and Southern, DeSoto County, which is part of the Memphis NPO. They receive federal dollars directly from FPA. They don't have to work through MDOT the way we do. The overwhelming majority of their local match, which they have the same match requirements, comes from local funds. The one that is the most close to us, and really is a very good comparison to us, is the Oxford system. So Oxford University Transit has been in existence long before we have, in terms of the city route. The grant is administered through the city of Oxford. The university provides local match. They split that local match through a formula in terms of what coverage is operational side and what coverage is the capital side. So in a way of comparison, and again, this is just comparison, I've taken these budgets and these proposals that we've written and what we've had in the last 10 years or eight years, and I've used the local Oxford fund and their cash or their percentages in terms of what their agreement is, just kind of show a comparison of what their local share is. So when you look at the Oxford system, and I mentioned this in MSU and Starkville, but the blue is the federal share, so that doesn't really change. The local requirement does not change, but the percentage of how that's split changes. To the tune of when you look at 2018 or 2019, the city of Oxford provided, I'm mentioning the city of Starkville here just again, it's a comparison, but the city of Oxford provided $475,000 in local cash to their transit system. In last year's budget, they were just over half a million dollars. For the tune of about three and a half, four million dollars for the life of the project in terms of local cash contributed by the city of Oxford to their local transit agency. Sandra, none of you are asking for $450,000? But I use this as a point of talking about how we've been able to work together and how we continue to grow as a system, especially when you look at the fact that we have 71 stops over our whole system. Forty-two of them are off campus, 29 of them are on campus. That means 59% of our stops are in your community. When you look at the 11 routes we have, four routes are on campus, four routes are town gown, which go, you know, from the city into campus to move people back and forth, three routes are in the town only. That means that 83% of our routes in terms of mileage and route miles are town or town gown routes. 59% of our stops, as I mentioned, 29% of our total riders the last two years have been in the city of Starkville. So when you look at that and the story that tells, and this is going to be very difficult to find, and this goes back to that necessity issue, this is what happened since March 15, when we closed down all campus routes. We went in one bus on every route. Every bus was half capacity. Everyone had to have a face mask and every, you know, even, even before the city ordinance and the state mandate. But this was the first time that we really got down to understand the brass tacks of what those true riders were. So this is a list of every one of our routes and every week, and we track every single rider throughout the time. And we carried 14,500 riders since March 15. And that's from March 15 to August 8. Those are 14,500 people that had no opportunity for any other type of transportation. Those are people just in the city. We have four or five known individuals that rode transit in Smart fixed route, not pair transit, to get to the hospital, to use the hospital services to be tested. These are 14,000 people that did not have, you know, they weren't just riding because it was cool to ride the bus. You know, you're getting a closed air facility with masks and everything's closed off. It's not the most welcoming thing, which we like to think our buses are great, but we know that from Department of Homeland Security, transit is essential, but there are known stigmatisms associated with that. So again, we're very proud of the service we provide. We're very thankful of the services and the finances that help about us. But as we continue to grow and as we continue to focus on how we can improve the quality of life for every single person in this community, you know, it does come at a cost. And we're not here asking for that, but I just want you all to know as part of our relationship and where we are, what those true values are and what those true benefits are that we continue to offer you. And we're very thankful of that relationship.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to start, and then I will go around the room and see if there are any questions. And one of the things, I think it's an incredibly important service that you all offer to the city, and we're very grateful that we partner with MSU in doing this and that you all take a leaky on it. I am curious about your numbers. That, y'all have a route that goes out to the airport. I'm guessing there wasn't much airporting, or maybe there was during initial stages of that. Is that, are those numbers in, in the airport?
If I can, if I can actually zoom in on this, it actually shows GTR. GTR shut down. That route shut down for about 10 weeks. We started that when Mike Haynes told us they had enough, you know, folks coming back.
Okay.
But you can slide over to the left there. I've got it, never mind. Yeah, so this is a week by week comparison. So that first week, March 15, we carried 15 people.
Okay.
And we know that was probably some repatriation of people leaving town to get back home, whatever that might have been. But there were a number of weeks there, the zeros are the, that's when we shut that route down because of lack of travel through the, to GTR.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that. I was just curious if you had calculated those in the 14,000, whatever. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, Alderman Carter, any questions of Mr. Dumas?
I do not.
Right, Alderman Sistronk?
I think it's a terrific service to our community, and I'm glad that the city's able to participate at some level. Miller was talking about Oxford and their higher millage rate. That's one of the reasons I think that they are able to participate more robustly in a service in their community.
Alderman.
Yeah, thanks for that, Dave.
Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Former Alderman Dumas, thank you for that presentation. I would say, since the beginning of this Smart bus system in city of Starkville, it's just really impressive, the amount of growth and how user-friendly that the system is becoming. It certainly, as it matures, you see things get better, the routes get improved, the number of ridership is increasing, and I look forward to that continuing in the future. As long as we maintain the opportunity to have the federal funding in place, it's incumbent upon the city of Starkville and all the other partners to make sure we do what we can do to help this program be successful, not only for the students on campus and as you're seeing, the increasing ridership among the citizens of Starkville. And while it does become something that is convenient, ultimately, that's what you want. You've got to provide it for essential travel, but as it becomes more convenient, as routes change, you're going to see more people continue to ride, to ride the bus. And so kudos, job well done. Keep up the good work. And I'm very hopeful that the relationship between all partners involved in this can weather this storm that we're currently in and make sure that we keep this system moving ahead. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Former Alderman Dumas, good to have you with us tonight. Do you have, I know you probably know this, how much is, how much federal money does Oxford get for their, for their bus system?
I don't know. I do know that they're very comparable in terms of us, when we're looking at two and a half, three million a year in terms of federal, federal aid, they're about that.
So they're just, they're local participation, the most likely percentage if you're talking about I've seen a 60,000, 60,000 billion. Twenty, is that not, does that cover 20%? That's not about 20%.
Their, their funding share is on the operational side, which we're, in their set standard, it's just like ours, 50/50. The city of Starkville, I mean, the city of Oxford, I believe, covers 48% of their, they've got a different percentage for what they cover in terms of operational costs versus what they cover for administrative capital costs. They bought up several new buses, for example, and I know Oxford, I mean, the university covered the majority of that cost. But...
What is their ridership compared to?
It's very similar. I mean, our first day in class, we had 1,900 riders, down from 6,800, which is what we've averaged the last three or four years. They averaged, or they had 1,300. So they're, they're very comparable in terms of numbers. Where we're 700, 800,000 a year, they're right there, they're right there with us.
They probably have an allocation, I'm certain, some allocation from the general office. Did they commit abolum, abolum tax and milage to their?
I don't know. I'll tell you, when I was, when, when, when this started and I was asked to chair the committee, or the committee that put the first proposal together, that was, that was the original, that was the original ask, and not, it wasn't even a formal ask to the board, but I presented that to the mayor and the ma, and that, it was not sound favorable to dedicate a deal to transit services. And that is what most municipalities of our size or larger do, so that there's a dedicated abolum to that service.
So Oxford may be doing it, right?
Potentially.
Do they have, certainly, they have more buses than we have?
They do not. No, we, we...
Larger buses, just September size.
We have gone in and we have a joint contract with a large bus manufacturer. We're buying the same, our campus buses that we are now using, they, they use the same campus buses we use. The cutaway buses, which is a van nose buses, they, we all buy off the same contract from the state of Mississippi, so it's the same bus.
What would be your suggested contribution increase to the program from Starkville?
I don't know. And I, and I think that's something in fairness that would take a group of people some time to go through and think about, because there's so many metrics and there's so many factors in play. Vehicle miles, service times, because the city routes run 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, six days a week, 12 months a year. Campus routes run 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, five days a week, and only nine months a year. But ridership is much higher in it. So there's so many factors that would have to be considered in terms of what is a fair percentage. That's, there are a lot of factors away, and I don't have the answer to that.
Won't put you on the spot. Appreciate the information, appreciate you coming to knock. How are you?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, I just want to briefly state to Alderman Dumas, thanks for the great work.
Thank you, sir. All right. Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, Dr. Dumas.
All right, I do have one, one, there's another distinction unless it's changed. Oxford does charge, do they not?
They do receive fare box.
I mean, it's not a lot, but...
Not a lot.
But they do, they do have a fee.
There's a whole nother dynamic in terms of fare collection and other things. But students ride for free.
Right.
So the majority of their riders, just like ours, their students don't pay, which is original, you know, with us being funded through students, we, there would be no revenue associated with fare box.
Right.
Fares have actually, for the most part, been extended across most public transit because of COVID. But that is not part of the percentage in terms of local share. That, just like the percent, it was another one of the slivers on top of our local share. We get funding from local contracts where we provide stops to apartment complex, you know, various apartment complexes. They pay for that service. We get advertising dollars. So those go in on top of it as a percentage of cost share for each entity, state, the same.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just, I remembered that, and I didn't know if that had changed. So, all right, well, thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Always nice to see you. Anytime we, anytime we can help, let us know. Thank you. All right, next we move on to public hearing. Our first public hearing is our second public hearing on the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget and tax milage for the city of Starkville. What I will do is to allow Alderman Sistronk, since she's the budget chair, to speak to that, then I'll open it for the public hearing, and we will come back out of that. And when we take it up under board business after that, we will, we will have the vote at that point in time. So Alderman Sistronk?
Thank you. This, in ordinary times, would be a relatively easy budget. We do not have a lot of new things. We have two fairly expensive new things that we're budgeting for and had, had our sales tax numbers, if we were confident that they were going to be back in plus, this, this would be a fairly routine budget. I don't know that we would have anything more than the one mil increase that we have talked about since we began applying for and ultimately accepted the bill grant. But it, but it's not an ordinary year. And so with the projection for lost sales tax revenues, with the two big programs that we have committed to, the bill grant, which is for the revitalization of Highway 182, and the replacement of, and upgrade, replacement is barely the right word, upgrades to the body cameras that are provided to our police officers, we have some additional expenses that, that we would not have normally had. So that's where we've gotten to in terms of needing to have a two mil increase to balance the budget. That's not the only thing that we have in play to balance the budget, but that's the thing that people are most interested in because it impacts them. And let's go ahead and say, I get it. Nobody likes really to pay taxes. It's just, it's just the way that it is. Nobody really enjoys it. But I would like to talk a little bit about the city of Starkville's tax rate and our overall tax assessments with the various government entities that we do pay taxes to, and try to put something into context with the 36% that you asked about last night, Alderman Walker. I'd also like to say that that calculation was skewed by the person who did it having picked up a number from a BAF file that we had online. Had he used a number from the Odyssey's financial statements, which is what, what we should always look to when they're available, that percentage wouldn't have been 36%. It would have been more 17 or 18%. So Matt, could you put that PDF up for me? This is a brief history of taxes in the city of Starkville. The, the first page there is going to show what you, as a, as a resident in the city of Starkville, pays in taxes. And this is from 2009 to 2020. And as you know, we pay our taxes in arrears. So the taxes that you will pay in fiscal, city fiscal year 21 are actually based on 2020 numbers. We pay county taxes, that blue bar there that you see, those are the taxes that we pay to the county. That orange bar is what we pay to the city. And then the gray bar is what we pay for schools taxes. And you'll see that over the last 11 years, our taxes have gone from 125 mil to a little over 150 mil. And, and you will see that the city, as a, as a portion of that, has, has grown a little bit, but it is still the, the slimmest of the three numbers. If you look at that in terms of how that tax percentage changed by year, your total tax bill, not, not any one element of it, but your total tax bill, you will see that as a rule, it doesn't change too terribly much. There have been a couple of years when, when it did change significantly. But over the last three years, the, from 18, 19, and 20, the city, which is the driver for the increase there, has increased your total tax bill less than 1% in 2018, less than 1% in 2019. And in 2020, you're, when you get your tax bill for 2020, if we vote to approve this increase, your, your total tax bill will go up about 1.3%. So when, when people say taxes have increased 36%, it sounds as if, if you had a $1,000 tax bill, that your next tax bill would be $1,360. But that's not how it's going to work out. If you had a $1,000 tax bill, your next tax bill is in all this news pass, your next tax bill will be more like $1,013. And this last page shows you how, how the millage rates have changed by year by entity. Again, the blue is the county, gray is the school system, and orange is the city. And then that... And then that last column is the total. So if you look back over the last eleven years, you'll see that your taxes have gone up because the county has raised taxes considerably, a, a, almost fifteen mils over eleven years. The city has raised taxes about ten mils over eleven years, and the school system has raised taxes about two mils over eleven years. All that said, the, the last thing I'd like to say about taxes is to address the idea of waiting and seeing, and we just simply don't have that luxury. We have a, a, a one opportunity with the adoption of the budget and with setting our mileage rate to set mils for the year. If, if we could wait and do this in January, I, I'd be happy to do that, or if we could wait and do it in March, I'd be happy to do that, but we don't have that, we don't have that option under state law.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to open it as a public hearing. This is an opportunity for anyone coming, wishing to come forward and talk about the, the tax proposal by the, by the city, and so if you would, when you come forward, if you would state your name, please, and we will, we will, uh, we will listen to what you have to say.
We, we, we have been putting on a lot of strain and stress and, uh, but we will understand that people can go on in the rear. Uh, we can understand if, until we get out of Fort Washington, put a fee. A lot of people would that, when they, when they found out about COVID nineteen, that they're going to pay the people, thinking of the hope, if we got caught up in all this. But, uh, uh, we hoping that, as it just come in November, that we will be serious about trying to get leadership, bright leadership in Washington, but in the meantime, uh, you have, you have to keep us out of the rear, uh, uh, you have to keep us afloat, letting, letting us understand.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else? Alderman Smith-Imman, nice to see you.
South Jackson Street, uh, we have, we have more, uh, just want to touch base on a few things tonight, and I wanted to get, I wanted to say something that I'm going to say, but, I want to encourage you to, uh, start with a zero budget. If I add a few things, a few things different, uh, that's okay, but look at how well we're doing the things we're doing today, our cost effective, our getting our money. All right, we're collecting, this administration is collecting two point one billion dollars more a year in every one town. Two point one, I'm going to start, two point one, it says, two point one, okay, uh, Tanner, your numbers are okay, except you throwing the city in with the schools and with the county. We're running a city, you need to look at, at what we're doing as a city. And the city, we're, we're, we, our mileage has gone up seventeen point eight percent just in the first five minutes. And also, keep in mind, we get sales tax too, so when you compare us to the school system and to the county, they'll have sales tax in there too, because they don't get that. Okay, we got an opportunity to help, we got an opportunity to hit that also. So I think it needs to be fair when you, when you, when you start comparing taxes, just talk about what the city is doing. Don't throw it, don't throw it in the school system, don't throw it in the county too, because you don't have control of that. And I think the school system is at the max, I believe, and really, I, I can't go where I wanted to, and really, I mean, they, they're, you know, believe, we don't, I'm right there, no opportunity. So, so I, I just want to encourage you to, uh, uh, to take a good look, just be cost effective in what we're doing, there are some things we can change, do better, uh, and, and, and I, when I say taxes don't up, thirty, thirty-six percent, we're, we're collecting that much more, okay? Individually, they don't, okay? Uh, we, we, we're repricing twenty-five percent of property every year, we add progress, we're growing, so that, that part of the, of that part of the praise is, this administration, that part of it increases fourteen percent since you've been in office, grow, reap. That, and mileage is going up seventeen percent, mileage, and I expect, I expect to each individual, when your mileage goes up, each of us pay more tax, okay? So let's, let's, let's try to picture, uh, uh, have a clearer picture of what we're doing. And, and, and don't miss anything. I don't, I don't think we need to miss anything, but I just, I just think we should try to, uh, just watch how we spend the money. Look at the problems we've got today, what, which work can we just continue, what work can we do better with, what do, what, what we need to eliminate versus continue to spend? Two point one million dollars in abon taxes a year, right now, is a lot of money. Let's look at how we're spending that money. Back to you, Alderman.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and we will move next to the public hearing and consideration of variance twenty dash oh nine, a request for a variance from the required amount of parking for proposed condominium development located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Guest Drive and Mallory Lane. Mr. Havill?
This is a variance request by Willis Tovens, Richard Engineering, behalf of Charlie Morgan, for the required amount of parking for proposed condominium development. The development is located on northeast corner of the intersection of Guest Drive and Mallory Lane, commercial C D condominium. The applicant is proposing to build thirty com, thirty unit condominium development. The city code requires one point two five parking spaces per bedroom, which would require seventy-five parking spaces for development. The applicant has requested a reduced parking space per bedroom, which would bring the parking to sixty parking spaces for the entire development. The Board of Alderman has previously approved a special exception request from thirty-two units of condominium development, subject property in July, uh, seventh of twenty twenty. The request was notified in accordance with, uh, section three point seven point three E of Unified Development Code. Forty-one property owners, record within a hundred and sixty feet, was notified directly by mail. A legal ad is published in Purple Daily News on August eleventh, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on the property in a conspicuous manner. As of this date, the planning office received one phone call about the request that would be reported on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, the board adjusted the rules voted six to one to recommend approval of the request. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed variance request could meet the criteria for variance review and approval, but a reduction in the number of units could also provide enough parking for each unit. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, is the applicant here? Uh, yes, if you just, let him find a seat, that'd be great. There they go, they can sit up right there while you're at the podium, how about that? Doing good, doing good. Hey, Mr. Morgan, I didn't realize that you were here, I didn't recognize you with your mask, okay? All right, thank you. Anything you wish to add to, to what has been provided on this, Mr. Havill?
Um, no, just here to answer any questions, my half.
Okay, all right. Um, well, I was going to ask, because I, I wondered, um, under the criteria for the variance review and approv, and, and approval, um, what exactly were the special conditions that, uh, that y'all felt caused this to need, this variance to be needed?
Uh, well, I guess, the first thing was, you know, we were upset, we changed the orientation of the building, I guess, the face, the front of the road, by doing that, we pushed the parking to the rear, and we're not allowed to have any parking beyond the rear wall of the building, if I'm not mistaken, per the town home section on page, uh, six, seven, and we're just pretty much limited on the amount of space that we added there.
Okay, so the reversal, or the, the movement of the buildings themselves pushed it far, far in effect?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, well, let's see if the, if any board members have any questions. Alderman Carver, do you have any questions?
No, related to this, but I've been observing, you're a good dad, and we keep him quiet and everything. I appreciate that. If anyone did have to let me know.
Okay. Alderman Sistronk?
Alderman Little? I, I noticed the changes from the last time you were here a few weeks ago, and it had, it's significantly modified, uh, to fit the city's requirements, so I'm okay with this going forward and, uh.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This is, uh, I think the, the mayor's question got out at, uh, this just a little bit, and again, I certainly appreciate the, the change to try to meet, uh, what the original code was, um, but as, looking for, through these conditions of what, how we might actually grant this variance based on the conditions, I too am, am finding it a little difficult to understand, um, what makes it a special condition and what is the hardship, um, that had resulted from the actions of the applicant. I, I think I could, I could get on board with the, uh, reduction in, in one, but it seems to me that what's causing, uh, the need to go from seventy-five to sixty parking spaces is the number of bedrooms that are being proposed on, on the site, uh, which, per the code, the idea would be is that the number of bedrooms and then the number of parking are going to be, what is the, sort of the limiting factor in how a site can, can be developed? And so I think there, there's potentially so, some rationale beyond that, but I would like to hear that the applicant, because ultimately, it's up to the applicant to make, uh, that request and how they're meeting those criteria, and so, um, in, in terms, if you have other, uh, other reasons for why we might address that in terms of special conditions or hardship that hasn't been created, uh, by, by the applicant, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I think, uh, the reduction of parking, like I said, we're trying to meet the lowest level that you have, I guess, if I'm not mistaken, which is the minimum you have is one parking space per bedroom in the code, I'm not necessarily sure the section or where that is. And, uh, again, you know, we're limiting this amount of parking to, well, by what we got passed for the special exception last time, and then again, if, we do have any overflow parking, we still have overflow parking at the two condos we have across the road and to the southeast of that, we have additional parking as well, that would account for the parking, the lack of parking in this situation here. And I just, looking at this site, we're just really, it's just, we're, we're fighting for space, I mean, there's a large even on the south, I mean, on the north side of the property that we're having to contend with as well, and so, that's the thing.
Yes, sir, thank, thank you. I think some of those began to get at it. One of the, one of the questions that I would, that I would pose is, uh, looking at the amount of impervious surface, uh, is it a reduction, um, from the size of the buildings if you had to lose a few more bedrooms versus adding that additional parking that may be able to, to, uh, offset in terms of stormwater management? I think those are the types of things that, as a board member, and when I'm trying to better understand if we're going to be granting these variances, um, to have that clearly stated i, in the, in the applicant's package, I think it makes everybody's decision a, a little bit easier moving forward, so, thank, thank you very much, and I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Beatty?
Thank you, Mayor. How many bedrooms for this, for this new development there?
We'll have sixty bedrooms.
And how many parking spaces are, 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 from?
Sixty.
Sixty?
And actually, the new, we'll have, we'll have sixty-one on my blue cycle, and this is just the one that I committed for a year, or less, if you want to have a parking space.
The exception would be normally we would require how many parking spaces, I'd look at.
Seventy-five, it's one point two five per bedroom to account for any guests or visitors to the development.
And you say there's still, I mean, wh, what I, what I don't want to see is what happens all the time, people, there's, uh, and when it's, when it's visitors, you know, there's, there's excess parking, they still park on the street.
Yes, sir.
And that's just what we, we don't need is for fifteen, twenty cars to be out there all the time, and they're going to be visitors, we're going to have sixty people in there, but you're going to have another fifteen, twenty people there all the time coming going visiting, that kind of thing. I just don't, so you, is there enough space to accommodate, eh, on your other properties, adjacent properties, to where that could, could, it could meet that overflow and we don't have cars coming, going to park out on the street?
You know, like, go by that, it's by showing, you know, I don't even think it's from the Google image, to the Google driving, you could see it from the bottom, you know, there's about seven additional parking spaces, or seven, or, excuse me, a, a lot more actually, there, there's two condos up the road from there that have overflow parking that back off into the street that they would be able to use as well.
Um, the only concern I would have was, I'm gonna, I'll probably yield to the, to the P Z board on, zoning board on, on their decision, but would be the fact that if, it's like a lo, lots of others, apartment complexes and condominium complexes in Starkville, parking going to end up a lot of, um, spilling out onto the street, and that's, you know, that's, that just creates traffic issues and stuff like that. The other, the other thing I would mention, Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, does this meet, uh, it's going to be the, the hundred year floodwater mitigation?
Uh, I think, it's been a discussion with the city of years and working out the side with a potential bond, appropriately for all that.
But willing to fall, if it's, if we approve this, it, it will, we'll be, be guaranteed that we, we.
Sales will be our stormwater ordinance, uh, currently, it would have to apply for some type of variance, and we come back to you off of that issue.
Yeah, I'll come back and ask the, the variance on that stormwater.
Yes, sir, that size for the hundred year storm?
Okay. Um, I hear you, thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins, any questions?
No, no questions, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
Alderman, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I was remiss, we, if we're going to have people up front here, we need to know their names, so would you introduce your children to us?
Yes, sir.
Celeste?
What's your name? What's your name, Miranda?
Miranda?
Yes, sir.
Pretty name, thank you for being such good ladies, we appreciate you being here. All right, if there are no.
To send you up here someday.
Uh-huh, that's right. Okay, I will now open this as a public hearing, so anyone wishing to speak to this item now would be an opportunity to speak in favor or against this particular variance request. Anyone? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and this is an opportunity for consideration, so do I have a motion from?
So, Mayor?
A motion for all to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second? Second from Alderman Beatty. No further discussion, all, if you would please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistronk.
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
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 Okay, I was not sure, was that a nay from Alderman Walker? It was a nay, so a vote, a, a motion carries, it is a, a six to one vote in favor. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it, Josh.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Thanks, Jeff.
Bye-bye. All right, our next item is a public hearing in consideration of variance twenty dash zero seven, a request for variance from required lot size and dimensions located at seven ninety-eight Pine Circle in S D two zoning district, and Mr. Havill?
This is a request by Tommy Turner for a variance from the required lot size, dimensions for existing legal non-performing lot in accordance with section three point one seven point one point A point two of the Unified Development Code. The approval of this request is needed to construct a new detached single dwelling home on the lot. And as you can see, once located, uh, we go down, uh, South Jackson, and it'll be lot is directly ahead of you when you get to the three lane stop as you're entering the suburbs. The applicant is requesting relief from the minimum lot size and lot width for existing lot. The lot was originally part of Lot Nine of Pleasant Acres subdivision, flat in nineteen fifty-five. Lot Nine was subdivided to create the subject lot around nineteen fifty-eight, prior to being annexed in the city. You can kind of see the sketches, this in the records of, uh, City Hall, cut up on the screen of the original flat. The current lot does not need the minimum lot size for the zoning, which is S D two. It is therefore classified as legal non-performing lot. A legal non-performing lot is a lot existing legal at the time of the passage of the U D C or at the time of annexation of the city's jurisdiction, which does not by reason of design or dimension conform to the regulations of the. conform to the regulations of the district in which it is located. The lot is approximately forty-five percent smaller than the required seventeen hundred and fifty square feet. It is at seventy feet, six inches wide, which is less than the required hundred feet. The proposed structure, which is shown in this sketch, along with the actual three of the stat reports. The proposed structure does meet the required setbacks. The request was noticed in accordance with section three point seven, point three E of the Unified Development Code. Eleven property owners of record within a hundred and sixty feet were notified directly by mail. Legal ad is posted in Starboard Daily News, August eleventh, twenty twenty, and a sign posted on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the planning office received one email inquiring about the request and two emails against the request, which are in the stat report. On August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, the Board of Adjustment Appeals voted five to two to recommend approval. And in the opinion of the planning department, those variance requests could meet the criteria of variance review and approval. An argument could be made that a special condition exists peculiar to this lot and that the hardship was not the result of the actions of the applicant. Additionally, granting the variance for minimum lot size of lot width would make it possible for the minimum reasonable use of the property, which is a residential dwelling unit in the residential neighborhood. One additional slide to show you, this is taking that sketch and kind of superimposing it over the lot to give you an idea of the scale of how the proposed house would fit in with the subdivision. As you can see, the front setbacks that's being proposed is about forty feet, which is in line with the two properties to the east and west, which are both kind of angled. They're not necessarily facing straight north. And then the side setbacks, the minimum of ten feet, I think they've actually exceeded that and they've exceeded the rear setback. It's just the lot width and the lot size that's different. Is there any question?
Alright, thank you. And you, you, sir, the applicant?
I am, yes.
If you'd state your name.
Tommy Turner.
Alright, thank you, sir. Anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Havlin has said?
Um, well, I would say that, and I think he said this, the subdivision was created in nineteen fifty-four. And I have, and I'm able to discern from the Chancery Burke's office when it went into the city. I've been quite a while there, at least that's what I'm trying to figure that out. Uh, it, it met, it met all the requirements when the subdivision was created. Uh, all the, uh, everything that needed to be done. It was perfectly legal. Uh, you build columns until, until this latest revision of the city code.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir. I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter now would be your opportunity. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter for events? Alright, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing and we will inquire of the board if they've got any questions of either Mr. Havlin or the applicant. So, Alderman Carter?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Siskel?
No.
And Mr. Little, I've seen your hand.
Uh, Mr. Turner, how long have you owned this piece of property?
Um, I have to be back there, about fifteen years.
And what size home are you planning to build? Is it a home that you're building for yourself?
About, and you saw up there, and that's what I planned to buy.
Yes, sir. About how many square feet is it?
I think it's about twelve hundred.
And you, do you plan on living in it? Are you going to rent it out? Do you plan on living in it? Is that your plan?
Yes. Yes, I do.
You live in the neighborhood now? Do you already live in the neighborhood anywhere or do you live somewhere?
I, um, I'm, well, my home state is in, in, uh, Dr. Loggins.
Okay.
My office is in Two Love, so, um, back and forth and back and forth. I own approximately one nineteen North Montgomery, and that's about my starboard residence.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I do have a few questions and these may be more for Mr. Havlin or the city attorney. Again, looking at these six criteria for variance review, I agree, it certainly looks like it meets the special condition. And so I just want to make sure that what I'm reading and what I thought I heard Mr. Havlin say is accurate. That the plot was somewhere in the neighborhood of nineteen fifty-eight when that has been subdivided.
Correct.
And also from the nineteen seventy-four official map for the city, this lot, as far back as that, shows this same lot in that condition?
Correct.
So looking at that, clearly, if you look at the planned view of Pleasant Acres, this lot certainly looks different than the others. It is clearly a little bit smaller. So I can certainly see where it would meet the special condition. Uh, I see the hardship is not being anything that was created by the applicant. If anything, it was created when the lot was subdivided all the way back at least to nineteen fifty-eight. Looking at the minimum variance on number E, it appears that we are asking, that the applicant is asking for two particular variances. They were asking for a variance of lot width and they're asking for a variance in lot size. Is that correct?
Yes.
So having a quick scan, looking at T S C maps of the Pleasant Acres neighborhood, because I was curious. It looked, at least according to T S C maps, that there would be around twenty-two additional lots in Pleasant Acres that would also, would not meet the hundred-foot minimum width requirement. So there's at least twenty-two additional lots that would also have to beat that variance request for the lot width. I'm not sure on the lot size what the number would be, but looking at that, there appears to be at least a couple that would probably also need that request. And looking at this and trying to make a decision on where I stand and looking at how it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. You have Pleasant Acres, which is a single-family detached residential subdivision. And you have an applicant that is proposing to build a residential, single-family detached house in the subdivision. And through no fault of the landowner or the applicant's right, they cannot fulfill the lot, the size requirements for both lot width and lot size. Which means that if this were to be denied tonight, I'm not sure what the owner of this property would have the opportunity to build by right. Because by right, this property can be single-family detached. It cannot be a commercial unit or it can't be anything along those lines. Is that correct, Mr. Havlin?
Correct.
So in, in looking at this, while it gives me some pause and understanding that the size of the lot is definitely different than the surrounding lots in Pleasant Acres. It also appears to me that there's other lots in there that would also not meet the existing code that's in the U D C in terms of lot width and potentially lot size. So with that, I think the variance has merit for trying to look at what would be number E in there to granting the variance in the minimum that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building or structure to meet with something that would conform as best possible to the surrounding development. I will say that I think there is one additional condition that if approved, that I would seek to recommend and I would ask the applicant to, to know where I stand on that, would be that a condition because of the difference in lot size would be to construct a six-foot-tall privacy fence shall be constructed prior to a certificate of occupancy on the west, south and east property lines behind the front wall of the primary building in accordance with the use and development standards in the U D C. So if this is to be approved tonight, I will be adding that as a condition for approval. And Mayor, I will yield for other people to have questions.
Alright, thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Bailey?
Did you purchase two lots? Did you have to buy both lots?
I purchased two lots. I sold one of them and I kept the other one. And the buyers of the lot that, that I sold were aware that I was planning to build a house on this one. That was part of the, it was discussed in great detail. I have offered to sell them this lot and they wanted it just because they're the next-door neighbors. And Mr. Hawes, they're nice folks, and they just turned me down every time.
So they had our, they had our feelings. So the two objectives were not, the two, the two objectives that, to the, when the announcement was made were not the two houses that are closest to this property?
Uh, I think one of them had the house to the east of this house. Uh, and his complaint was that it was too small. But there, there, I have to get about at least forty houses, and that's forty lots in that subdivision that are smaller than this one.
There wasn't, it wasn't proximity to his, it wasn't the proximity to his house.
Oh, it's, the house, when the house is built like that, to his house, I would say it's about fifty feet. There's plenty of room there.
There you go, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No questions, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
No matter, thanks.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, anyone, anything further, anything further you'd like to say, sir?
I'm sorry?
I just said, anything further you'd like to say?
Uh, no, I just think it's the lot is the way it was supposed to be from the very beginning.
Okay.
It should continue to be that way.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, um, we had the public hearing. Alderman Walker, is that you?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to just ask the city attorney if he might weigh in a little bit from the legal perspective in terms of what this, what this variance request and see what he has to say. Alderman Walker, first off, I would say you did a great job kind of racking through the criteria for the variance. So I'll, I'll not touch on those factors that you mentioned, but just talk about the burden of proof that the applicant has. The burden of proof on the applicant is by a preponderance of the evidence, and that's the lowest burden of proof in a civil case. You can support or substitute a phrase, more likely than not, or fifty percent plus one, or just a barely tipping of the scale. Or since football season is upon us, just crossing the fifty-yard line. It's up to you as a board to go through those factors and make a determination in your mind whether or not the applicant has met that burden. And so long as your decision is based on substantial evidence, as long as your decision is quote fairly favorable, it will be upheld. And remember that the phrase substantial evidence does not mean necessarily a lot of evidence. The law defines that it's more than a limmer or more than a mere scintilla. So I think the record established tonight espoused by Alderman Walker allows y'all to have that record to make a decision one way or the other that would stand up.
Alright, thank you. Did that answer your question, Alderman Walker?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor, I would, I would approve the motion, make a motion to approve this VA twenty oh seven with the additional condition, and I'm going to read it one more time. "A six-foot-tall privacy fence shall be constructed prior to certificate of occupancy on the west, south and east property lines behind the front wall of the primary building in accordance with the use and development standards in the U D C." And I will send a written copy of that to Lisa.
Alright, thank you, Alderman Walker. Do you have a second?
I'll second. And can I ask a quick question, Mayor?
Alderman Bailey, go ahead.
Would the fences on the side in the back not be an exception, an additional exception in the end?
I'm sorry?
He's asking, Mr. Havlin.
I can answer this. The fences on the side, that's.
Right, I can't run, I can't run a fence all the way.
No, the code says from the front lane of the house forward, it's limited to three and a half feet. From the front lane backwards, it's sixty.
So in this case, what?
And the good side of the fence is required to face out, so.
So what Alderman Walker's proposing, would this have, would this be another exception or would this conform to our?
No, it would conform.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so we have your second, Alderman Bailey? Alright, I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter?
Yea.
Alderman Siskel?
Yea.
Alderman Harris?
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Bailey?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
Alright, thank you. It is unanimous. Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time.
I guess I'm going to approve now?
You've been, you've been approved. When do you plan to write down?
Uh, well.
I didn't mean to ask a hard question.
If I get a permit, I'm required to do it within a year.
Yeah, okay.
That's the requirement. I hope you do it.
Okay. We, we welcome you to, to get going. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I take down the various signs upstairs.
If you, if we can get it back from you because it's ours.
We'll bring it back. We'll pick it up. You pick me up. Okay.
Thank you, sir. You have a good night. Alright, next item on the agenda is a public hearing consideration of S E twenty dash sixteen, a special exception to allow for a manufactured home on the west side of Sand Road in Area C, approximately five hundred and twenty-nine feet south of Lewisville Street in an R in zoning district. Mr. Havlin?
This is a special exception request by Angela McMullen for behalf of Starboard Daily News, uh, Consolidated School Districts. The use chart in section thirteen point three of the Unified Development Code requires special exception for dwelling manufactured modular homes in rural neighborhoods R in zoning district. As you can see on this, this site is closer to the intersection, not all the way to the intersection. It's in kind of strange, it's actually a separate parcel from the bottom parcel you'll see in the next page. Only a portion of the property is to be used for proposed use. The home site area is shown as a hundred and twenty-seven feet wide, the road, the total square footage of forty-three thousand three hundred and seven. The required minimum lot is one hundred feet wide at the road and forty thousand square feet in the lot area. There currently no dwelling on the site. The request was noticed in accordance with section three point four point three point E of the U D C. A property owner of record within a hundred and sixty feet were notified directly by mail. A legal ad is posted in Starboard Daily News on July twenty second, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on the property. Section three point four point one lists the criteria for special exception approval. One of those is the additional standards. Section thirteen point three point four of the U D C shows the additional standards that are associated with the use. On August eleventh, twenty twenty, the planning zoning commission is going to approve one to recommend approval. And in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with special exception request could meet the criteria of special exception.
Alright, is the applicant here, Ms. McMullen? Are you here or someone representing Ms. McMullen? Alright, the last time we did this and the applicant wasn't here, they had changed their mind. And so I am not, unless the board wishes otherwise, I'm not in favor of going forward unless someone is here to represent that they are indeed going forward. Have you communicated with Ms. McMullen?
I've got heard from Ms. McMullen. She was especially given a call back after planning and zoning. I'm going to skip forward to a couple of slides, just let you be aware of an issue. On this slide, you can see the area she's requesting for this particular case is the second yellow one from the top. The area that's shown in red with the dashed lines is the recently known to us T V eight easement. And so as you can see in a few pictures, kind of there on the side, what it looks like currently. She was concerned with whether or not she could use that lot because the easement has taken up the first sixty, seventy feet of the lot. And she was going to have a conversation with the school district about that, and we've never heard back from her.
I would suggest that we table this particular item until the applicant is ready to come forward.
Yes.
Do I, do I have a motion for that?
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion from Little to table until the applicant is, is coming forward. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Vaughn. Thank you, sir. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls you.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Siskel?
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Walker?
Yea.
Alderman Bailey?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Yea. Alright, it is unanimous. Thank you so much. And Mr. Havlin, last but not least, we have a public hearing consideration of S E twenty dash seventeen, a special exception for manufactured home on the west side of Sand Road in Area P, I believe it is. Now I'll let you move that.
This is a special exception request by Jolissa Dodd, uh, for behalf of Starboard Daily News, uh, Consolidated School Districts. Uh, it's Area P, approximately three thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven feet south of the Lewisville intersection. And again, according to the use chart, dwelling manufactured modular home in a rural neighborhood zoning district requires a special exception. As you can see, this is on the lot that's in the south, and this one's specifically further south and it's suddenly away from the T V eight lines that we're discussing. Only a portion of the property to be used for proposed use, the applicant provided a sketch of home site area. Uh, home site, or the, the home site area is shown as a hundred feet wide at the road and the total square footage of forty thousand square feet, which meets the minimum. which meets the minimum requirements for lot width and lot size. There are currently no dwellings in the home site area. The request was noted in accordance with section three point four point three E of the Uniform Development Code. Thirty-six property owners of record within a hundred and sixty feet were notified directly by mail. The legal ad is published in Starborough Daily News on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, and a sign was posted on the property. Section three point four point one lists the eight criteria for special exception approval. Section thirteen point five point eight D lists the eleven additional standards. On August eleventh, twenty twenty, the planning zoning commission voted three to one to recommend approval. And in the opinion of the planning department, the proposed use associated with special exception request could meet the criteria for special exception review and approval.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant here? Jodah. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anything you would like to add to what Mr. Havlin said, or anything you'd like to share with the board?
Well, I would love to say that this would be a major opportunity to meet.
All right, all right, thank you, ma'am. Well, what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this item on the agenda, if you would, please, now would be the opportunity. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, and, uh, I will canvass the board for any comments or questions that they might have. So Alderman Carver?
No.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
No.
All right, Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, and I'm over approval.
All right, I have a motion for, a motion for approval from Alderman Walker, and a second from, uh, Alderman Little, uh, Alderman Bailey.
Well, ma'am, thank you.
All right, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and a second. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Yes.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yeah.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Bailey.
Good.
Yay.
Yay.
It's unanimous. We will look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, in the, uh, the main event of the evening, we have, uh, under board business. We next go to consideration of the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one tax millage resolution of thirty point one three for the city of Starborough. Uh, Mr. Latimer, I'm sorry, okay, I have a motion for approval from, uh, Alderman Sistrunk. Do you have a second?
Sure.
Second from Alderman Bailey. And I was gonna say, Mr. Latimer, are you and Ms. Harden are, uh, confirming that the advertisements have been properly noted in the paper? And was that all of our criteria necessary?
Yes, ma'am. Um, city clerk has informed me that advertisements were made pursuant to the statute, and we made one tweet to the resolution that was in the board packet. We just clarified thirty point one three mils rather than twenty-eight point one three mils and the third where asked paragraph.
Okay, all right, and I think that resolution is in front of everyone. So now is the opportunity for, we've had our public hearing, now is the opportunity for the board to weigh in and speak about this matter. Uh, I clearly was involved in the, uh, discussions with department heads. I was involved in the deliberations associated with the putting the budget together. We had a work session, um, discussing this. I think that our department heads have worked hard to make sure that they haven't asked for any more than they need. Uh, over these many years, I have watched this board and other boards, um, hold the line, and we've been very good about doing that. Um, I think we have engaged in trying to be up to date in the things that we do in keeping up. It is no different than the price of, um, anything else going up. We have to meet those additional prices when we do such things as buy vehicles, which we have driven until the wheels fell off. Isn't that right, Vice Mayor Perkins?
That's right, ma'am. Thank you.
And so, uh, I think I have been incredibly responsible. There are some absolute needs. I don't think there's any question that our body cameras need to be updated because that has become a significant issue in police and law enforcement. And the bill grant clearly was something that we never would have applied for had we not ensured that we would be able to pay for it, and this millage is, is a part of that. Um, and we certainly never, never anticipated a pandemic that would put us in such a position to have to raise millage just to keep on functioning. So, um, I would like to give, uh, great congratulations and thank you to our department heads and to Alderman Sistrunk and, um, Ms. Harden on the work that they have done to put the budget together. So, um, I have said my piece, and I'm in support of this. Um, so, well, we'll start Alderman Carver?
No comment.
Okay, Alderman Sistrunk?
Nothing. Thank you.
All right, Alderman Little?
Well, I'll be as brief as I can. Um, I've received a few calls and emails over the last two or three weeks about this, and I spoke about my position on it during the last meeting. And, uh, I've since spoke with the budget chair on, on possible options and, um, we as a city, what, where could we potentially cut? Uh, and the city clerk worked up some numbers for me, and I think we could cut, if, if we furloughed everyone with the city one day, including elected officials, it was about sixty-one thousand dollars. If we did that one week over the next fiscal year, everyone take a furlough day between now and the next, in the next fiscal year twenty-one, that's about three hundred thousand dollars. Um, maybe not fill a couple of, um, pending personnel slots. As, as everyone knows, personnel is the biggest expenditure in the, uh, public or private sector, and, uh, that's the lion's share of our budget each year. Um, if we could maybe tap the brakes on some of that. Um, and I know I'm, I'm all, all for our first responders, and I, I know I see the need, recognize the need for the cameras. If we couldn't kick the can, you know, another twelve months on that, that's a huge expenditure. Um, we're not Chicago, we're not Portland, we haven't had a lot of those issues here. Uh, heaven forbid, I hope we don't have any. Um, but, you know, I'm just thinking, it, it's a tough year for our businesses. It's a tough year for, uh, many, many people have been impacted in a negative way. Um, we've seen firsthand this year that the city of Starborough lives and dies by the sales tax revenue, which is unfortunate. Um, the success in, uh, Mississippi State, um, we ride its coattails, there's no doubt. Um, we haven't seen fortunate so far, but we're two months behind and seeing how it's going to impact us. And as the budget chair spoke earlier, um, we don't get six months luxury to slip back in, in internal, um, uh, so, increase in, um, landlord tax. Um, I would prefer to wait on this and try to cut somewhere, but I don't think that's going to happen. But, um, I'm, I'm not supportive of the, of the, you know, the increase at this time.
Thank you, Alderman Little. Alderman Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I appreciate Alderman Little's perspective, and I, I, I don't disagree that there is merit to that, that especially the part about how reliant we are on, on sales tax, um, in, in our city. And I think that's been, uh, we, we've, uh, become too accustomed to, to using that. And in times such as these, uh, we, we realize that we're probably, uh, a little too, uh, a little too, uh, committed to, to that out of necessity. And, and it comes back to, to bite you in, in times like, like these. Um, right now, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of about one point one million deficit that we're trying to, to make up. This two mils is going to find a way to get us about five hundred or a little more than five hundred thousand dollars to, to go along, uh, with that. Um, and so that only gets us really halfway. Um, Alderman Little is, is, I agree, is correct that personnel is the, the very bulk of, uh, of the city and any other, uh, organization's assets. Um, and they're ours too. Um, and looking at this time to figure out what, what do you do, um, is, is pretty, pretty difficult to, to looking at that. I, I don't think, I certainly didn't anticipate, um, having to make a decision on a tax increase this year. Um, but some things, uh, broke our way, uh, one of which is a, a bill grant that we've been applying for in the city of Starborough for a, a number of years. It is a highly competitive federal grant, of which by us, uh, receiving that grant, we're gonna get in excess of twelve million dollars towards revitalization of MLK Highway one eighty-two from about old West Point Road down to, to Long Street, which has been forty years in the making. Um, and if we don't accept this grant, the likelihood of the city of Starborough being a viable candidate for a federal grant in the foreseeable future is pretty daunting. And out of that twelve million dollars, we have to match about three million dollars, of which we're gonna be bonding that out presumably. So paying for that, a couple hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year is necessitating that new money that needs to, to be found, of which one mil is really geared towards being able to pay the, the debt service on that. So when you look at the lack of sales tax revenue that's coming in, you gotta find the money somewhere. And, uh, from what I can tell, we can certainly look for places to cut, and we're to the point where it's cutting people. And yes, they're hurting right now in terms of the people that, the, what the pandemic has caused. And if you, you send another, a lot of folks, uh, to the city, to the, to the house, that's gonna be painful for, for those folks as well. I'm very hopeful that the, the days ahead are going to be much improved. But the reality of the situation is nobody knows exactly what's coming. Um, it may be that, uh, the pandemic is going to be over next week and there's gonna be a vaccine, or we may be facing these same challenges next March and next June. We just don't know. Um, I've been asked over the, the last several days about the city's rainy day fund, and do we not have one to be able to cover some of these costs? The answer is, I think, over the last seven or eight years, that the board, uh, through hard work, has done a, a pretty decent job of building up that rainy day fund. But if we have to blow it all at one time, then we have no rainy day fund if we're in a bad spot next March or next June. And so while it's certainly prudent to use some of that money, there's, the rainy, the rainy days may still be ahead of us because we, we just don't know the answer to that. And while sales tax has inched up, it looks like, a little bit. We're about to go into September, October, and November, months usually where our sales tax numbers are elevated by Mississippi State home football games. And unfortunately, this year aren't going to be, uh, one less game at home, for sure. But also, we're not gonna have those fifty or sixty thousand people that are in the stadium, and hopefully another twenty or so that are coming into town to spend their money. Um, it's just not going to happen. And so the likelihood of sales tax taking a hit over the next few months is, is really real. And I agree with what Mr., former Alderman Smitherman said earlier about looking for how we spend our money and spend it wisely. I can, I agree with that completely, and I, I think that is very prudent. And would say that, you know, where are we spending this money? The, the board has raised taxes. I would say you have a brand-new, uh, renovated police facility where City Hall and the police staff were originally in a building that was literally falling in on itself. Been a major improvement. The City Hall that the two previous boards approved, and then the previous board, uh, saw to fruition, has been a major improvement. We've spent money on bonds. We're, we're paving about five miles of road, uh, a, a year, uh, about a million dollars a year. Those are real improvements that people are seeing. And I think all those are, are debatable, and people can, can debate the, uh, the effective use of that money or not. But I think what is true is that that money is being put to things that are making the city better. And so I certainly have, uh, uh, didn't plan to, to vote for a tax increase this year. Um, but because of a, a perfect storm of somebody in the federal government saying, "We're gonna give you twelve million dollars, but you gotta come up with three," and then a global pandemic sort of presses our hands a little bit, that we can't sit around and, and, and wait, uh, for how we're going to make that happen. And so the future is a little bit uncertain. I think it's gonna be bright. Um, and the betting on the re-invention, the reinvigoration of MLK Boulevard is going to pay in the end. It's just gonna be a little bit down the road. But if you don't put the money in upfront, you're never gonna see the return on the back end. And so with that, Mayor, I'm, I'm gonna yield and say this is not an easy decision. It's not a decision that we come to lightly. Um, but I believe, given this, where we are, I believe it is the, the prudent decision.
Thank you, Alderman Walker. Alderman Bailey?
Mayor, uh, Alderman Walker has spoken very eloquently about the reasons we need to, to, uh, keep our address millage rate to, to keep our budget level. Uh, I would say that first and foremost, in my mind, I would be keeping, keeping our personnel on board and, and at level at where we are now. Um, also, um, our rainy day fund, I think it would just not be good, uh, good government to start spending down a rainy day fund. Uh, Alderman Sistrunk, if you, can you budget a deficit and use a rainy day fund to make up the difference?
That, that is doable. Um, one of the reasons that it's not prudent for us to dip into that is that it, it is, um, not, we do not have enough money in that fund to carry us, um, through the normal ebbs and flows of our cash flow. Um, and one of the things that you need to evaluate when you're looking at dipping into your ending fund balance is, is whether you have, uh, those sorts of cyclical needs throughout the year, and, and we do. Um, but I, I do believe we could, um, other cities are, um.
They're doing, about their use rate is.
Cities, cities that have considerably higher percentage of their budget, um, in, in their, um, ending fund balance or rainy day funds, um, other cities are doing that. We are at, at a point where we're at, at a, a percentage that is acceptable, but it is not viewed as being, um, uh, robust in any way by credit rating agencies. They continually point to, um, the, the percentage that we have being a, um, credit challenge for the city of Starborough.
And that can affect your bond rate, the interest rate, things like that.
It does.
Uh, your rates and, and things like that. Um, I've also thought that continuously funding, paying their funds for, just for that continuously, or merchants came up unexpectedly, and that you wouldn't, that, uh, if possible, if all possible, that you wouldn't, um, budget short, long revenue or in the budget side, and then try to make up the difference on the.
It's certainly not sustainable. It is, it is money that we have built up over a period of time, and a one-time use of it eliminates it. And as I think Alderman Walker alluded to this, it would take us years to, to replenish that.
Um, essentially, state Mississippi doesn't allow, you know, start this budget for rainy day fund, but, but legislators allowed the budget for rainy day fund to stay low. Um, but what we borrow money when we issue general obligation bonds, bond rating agencies and bond purchasing stuff look for us to have been good ma- money managers of people's money of, and, and build up rainy fund in order to get favored rates on, on general obligation, if you know what I'm trying to say.
That's, that's correct.
Um, the other thing I would say, Mayor, I'll, I'll move on so we can, can do this, uh, is that, that we, and I know a lot of people say, "That's not, that's not relevant," but the fact that, that we get kept, I think, because we've had, um, up, upticks, or we've had increases in our sales tax continued the last, I don't know, number of years, we've been able to keep, compared with other cities outside, the, the, the fees, the average across state and Mississippi, been able to keep our landlord tax millage rate below average, facility below average. Um, we are a progressive, forward-thinking, forward-moving city, follows town, and have some, 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 uh, significant initiatives, like our bill grant and other things that we need, we need to fund, and we need to do, and take the financial commitment on our part to it. If we ever go back and don't, and decide not to, to, to do that, and don't have our, put our participation and our financial part into one of those things, and we lose a grant, it's hard for us to ever get another. Um, the other thing I would say is, it's built into every, into our general fund budget, which is what we're talking about right now, is some elements of discretionary spending for things like street repairs and things that happen, um, drainage, uh, dishes, things like that. If, if a leak of water, we get big ranges or something's been built, and all of a sudden we got flooding in an area, something like that. The ability to go into that, that part of town and spend ten or fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, or whatever it takes, on a street project or storm drain or something like that, that's all spent out of our general fund budget, out of our street fund. That's out of our general budget. And so if we start line out and trying to trim budgets and things like that, the next something that comes along, it's gonna require drainage work or something in the city, we may not have money to do it. Or we're tight as hell, we have a hard time finding money to do it. So, um, with that, I would say that I support the, the budget initiative and the, uh, the, uh, tax adjustments, uh, as proposed, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Uh, Mayor, I'm ready to vote on this item and the next item as soon as we can.
All right, thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you all for your comments. No question, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've had full discussion. Uh, I have a motion and a second, a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, a second from Alderman Bailey. If you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yes.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
No.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Bailey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
Nay.
All right. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Uh, second item that also regards the budget, so consideration of fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for the city of Starkville. Do I have a motion?
There's approval.
A motion from Alderman Sistrum, go to the second.
Sorry.
Second from Alderman Beatty. All right. Uh, Mr. Latimer.
And boy, this is the resolution that's actually tabled that was presented. It just talks about what is being done and, and the budget being done pursuant to the applicable statutes for the budget.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, discussion. Alderman Carter.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Little.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty.
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
No, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Alderman Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We have no comments. Uh, we have a motion and a second. If you would, please answer yea or nay. If the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Yay. All right. By a vote of five to two, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And I know this is an important vote and, uh, it was hard, hard for some, actually hard for all of us. So thank you for, for your dedication to the process. All right. Um, Alderman Carter has exited. The, the, uh, next item is plain stock. I have a motion for approval. Alderman Little, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrum. Uh, no discussion. If you would, please answer yea or nay. If the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right. By a vote of four to two, motion carries. Thank you so much. We have one. We have, we have one more that was moved from the consent agenda. Okay. But that's a request authorization to hire Scott Osborne. It is confirmed that it is Scott Osborne, Operations Manager in the Starkville Utilities Department. Move approval. I have a motion for approval from Alderman Little. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Sistrum. All right. Uh, discussion. Alderman Sistrum.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Little.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker.
No, ma'am.
Alderman Beatty.
No, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
No, ma'am, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And Alderman Vaughn.
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. I moved this, ma'am, because first of all, it was two different people who was, who were the job. And then we're seeing a lot of high-dollar jobs go to there and all department head, late members of our team. And I'm sure from our department here not making this, but most all these jobs come in, they $70,000 or more. But we got more department head, every department head is a member. They play a role in our, in the city, every page for each one of us. And that's why I pulled this off. I would not be supporting $70,000 per year. I would not be supporting at that price.
All right. Thank you, Alderman Vaughn. Um, Mr. Mr. Kimpf or Mr. Asher, would you all like to share the difficulty that you've had in, uh, finding this particular area of expertise quickly? I don't, I bet it didn't sound good. Uh, if you don't mind, sorry, I'm in a hurry, but not really. I just wanted to, for you to share because I'm aware of how difficult it has been to find someone with this particular expertise.
This position has been open in Ridge for almost two years now. Uh, I think the numbers that we've brought to the board and salary position is reflected in Mr. National Asper's salary survey, uh, of what that particular position is actually calling for, uh, you know, in, uh, in public space. Uh, I will also say that over the past six months, I've had other people in utilities culminating in Mississippi asking for the same position, asking for more money, uh, enough time. So the qualifications that we're looking for as we continue to improve our overall effort and able to deliver our customer, is we require more certification, uh, more management experience, more ability to train and develop and use new technologies as we go forward. And this is just kind of what we've, uh, we've, we've been shooting for and we've tried not to take less than that. And I think we're very fortunate to have found Scott, who brings a real long track record from Georgia, Virginia, and as in Florida, but wants to come back to Starkville and move down the road with the board set for his customer satisfaction.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Is that kind of what you're saying?
That's what I wanted because Alderman Vaughn, I wanted to make sure you knew how long we've been hunting for somebody because I understand your concerns. I just think that this particular skillset, I mean, we were very worried that we might lose our one operator to COVID and then be in a real pickle, so.
It is. And, and having, uh, the classification for water and wastewater, all of the characteristics on our environment, it just makes it harder and harder to find those people. There's a huge market out there and if people want to get into this for a career, it's a great opportunity right now because we just don't need a fee.
Okay. Thank you so much. I didn't mean to drag this out too long, but I did think that was, just, so. All right. I have a motion and I have a second. Uh, if you would, please answer yea or nay. If the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrum.
Alderman Little.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Okay. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Thank you. Move to a closed session. All right. I have a motion from Alderman Little that we go into closed determination session to determine the need executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Carter. No discussion. If you would, please answer yea or nay. If the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carter.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right. It's unanimous to be going into closed determination session to determine the need executive session.
Mr. Latimer, did you write down the motion?
I wrote down one, but I'm always a little hesitant about specifics.
Board made two motions tonight. The board approved the recommendation of termination of employee Timothy Neal and the board denied the grievance of James Merritt.
All right, and that concludes our business. I'm going to make my work session announcement. We will be having a work session at 10:00 a.m. on Friday, September the 11th. Public impressors are invited to attend. This is in accordance with Mississippi Statute 254113. It's a conference room at City Hall. And one of the things that we'll be taking up in the work session will be an update on the Build grant. So it should be interesting with people coming in from. Beyond that, if I need a motion to recess, please.
The lights working in your CM tonight?
Yeah, so I can't get a motion to recess. Thank you so much. I don't know, motion's going, it's always second going.
It's unanimous.
That's a yea.
That's implied.
Thank you, Alton Walker. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate it. Good night.
Yea, yea, yes ma'am. Good night.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Have a good night. You have to tell me what you think.